The December 10th, 2015 City Council meeting will not be called to order. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by Pastor Kenny Davis of Fellowship Baptist Church of Kilgore. Kenny is also the Parks Maintenance Supervising Technician for the City of Longview Parks Department. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our most heavenly and gracious Father, as we come here together tonight, Lord, we just, uh... we know that you're sovereign, you're in control of all things. And, Lord, we just pray discernment and wisdom over this meeting. Lord, I want to thank you, Lord, for the work that's been done in this city over the past year with the City Council members, the mayor, and all the employees of this city. But God, we want to thank the citizens as well. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here. But God, we ask for discernment over this meeting, that our vision and our decisions will be made based on you and to glorify you. Lord, at this time also, I'd like to, um, say a special blessing for those troops that are serving overseas, Lord, that can't be with their families during this Christmas, Christmas time. And God, as we go through this meeting, give us guidance. Lord, we thank you most of all that you're our Savior. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kenny. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're recognizing some members of the police department. Detective Chris Taylor and Detective Audrey Wright assisted the FBI, the Secret Service, and Homeland Security in efforts to combat internet crimes against children in 27 counties. The combined efforts of Detective Taylor and Wright have been recognized by the Secret Service, the Dallas ICAC, and most recently, the FBI. They were each presented with a certificate of recognition, signed by the Director of the FBI, James Corney, in appreciation of their assistance with several recent cases of the FBI. Detective Chris Taylor is a full-time computer forensic examiner. He's responsible for forensically analyzing computers and other digital devices for evidence necessary to prepare a criminal case. Detective Audrey Wright is responsible for completing and documenting field interviews involving possible suspects, family, or witnesses associated with physical or sexual abuse. She maintains a working relationship with the Gregg County District Attorney's Office, the Martin House Children's Advocacy Center, Child Protective Services, Good Shepherd Medical Center, and other law enforcement agencies beyond the East Texas area. It is because of their tireless efforts and their passion to see that each child receives justice that Detective Taylor and Detective Wright are invaluable to the department and to the community that they serve. You know, on behalf of the city and on behalf of the citizens, I just want to extend an incredible thank you to you who take care of those that really can't take care of themselves. The services you all have provided are invaluable for our children, for the citizens of Longview. And, you know, the longer that activity continues to breed in our community, the more it spurs things that we don't want to happen. So I appreciate your efforts, working with the agents that you have. What an amazing recognition to work with and be recommended and commended by the FBI. That just shows the level of competency, the level of dedication. And as a city, we really, really, really appreciate what you do for us. Y'all's service is, um...it's never recognized to the fullness as it should be. We want you to know from our hearts to yours, we really appreciate what you all do. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Job well done. Please keep up the good work. Y'all make Longview look very good. Okay, let me ask y'all a question. If we didn't do that employee recognition, just then, would you all have known about that? Because I didn't, and I'm the mayor, and I should know, and I don't. And that's why I'm so glad that we do these every council meeting so that we and the citizens of Longview can see what a great job our public service is doing for our community. Um, we're getting our money's worth, and I really appreciate y'all's service and dedication. Thank you all so much, every department. If we could do this all meeting long, we could recognize every department. We'll get to you. Keep doing the good work. It's coming around, I promise. Thank you all again. Citizen comment. I just have one speaker card during citizen comment. Mr. Lefty, vote.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, David Willard. I was gonna talk about two things tonight, but after visiting with Mr. Archer, I'm gonna wait till I hear his presentation before I comment on that. But what I want to do is talk about the parks. I hope all of you got to see the video, or the review that Scott Karen did on the parks. That is the most precise, detailed presentation I have ever seen in all the years I've lived here in Longview. And I was amazed at...of things I didn't even know existed in the parks. And baseball and softball, Scott asked for a $15 increase. We've been at $5 for the last 10 years. And the city isn't making any money. They're losing money. And the Park Board, I believe, only wanted to raise it to 10. I don't think if 10 was enough, Scott would have asked for 10. He's asking for 15 to break even. I believe the man knows what he's doing. That's what we hired him for, and I appreciate his service. And with that, I'll tell you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Lefty. Always a pleasure to have you here. Are there anyone else that'd like to speak that I don't have a card for? You can fill out a card later. Very good. Discussion item: Discussion of Residential Solid Waste Collection System Proposal. Mr. Archer, Assistant Public Works Director. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard. Well, we've discussed it quite a bit, and our team has worked really hard to put together a proposal for you tonight, how we make our program a fair program that allows a customer to decide at what level of service they would like. And so that's what we're gonna show you tonight. First, let me kind of cover a few things that we've discussed at the last meeting. These were some recommendations on some of the discussion items that were discussed, talked about. One of the things that the consultant had talked about was our 52% recycling rate, which is just outstanding for a program this size. In response to a question by Mr. Wright, the consultant stated it's one of the most generous programs around. Through some of the information that he gave us, we recognized that the city, in some cases, is subsidizing landlords and yard waste companies as far as disposal. He recommended that garbage and recycling fit within the can. He also recommended that we allow customers to obtain multiple waste and recycling carts for a fee, offer an easier, smaller cart for those that have a difficulty dealing with the larger one, and he talked about revising the bulky item program. So first, let me show you what we currently do. The first row here is garbage collection. So a garbage truck on his route, which is a side loader right now with the arm, deals with the carts, any yard waste, any bundled yard waste that may be out there, and any junk. And we consider junk things that are not yard waste, um, that won't fit in the cart. The second row shows the recycling collection. So our trucks collect what's in the bin, and then those boxes that are not broken down stacked up around it as well. And then our bulky item program, it collects the large junk items, the mattresses, the couches, those kind of things, and then large limbs. These are limbs that can't be bundled as far as the garbage collection on the first row. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about what's in our trash. Now, this chart and these numbers come from kind of a national average. But it'll be good to kind of show you where we're going and how far we've gone already. As far as recycling is concerned, those things that are recyclable coming from the waste stream, and this is a municipal home, paper, which is the largest item, 38%, all of that can be recycled under our current program. The 8% of the metal can be recycled. The 11% that is plastic can be recycled. So that brings us to 57% right now of what's in the waste stream that could go and be recycled, 57%. Now let's talk about what can't be. Or isn't it now, as now. Uh, food waste, that's 11%, so it goes to landfill. Glass, and I like to remind people that they can take glass to the compost site. We collect a lot out there, and so we have a 30-yard roll-off, and we filled it up twice since we started that program, which is a lot of glass. Wood waste, other, that's textiles, rubbers, that kind of thing. And yard trimmings is 12%. So 43% currently has to go to the landfill. We don't have an option for it. But I would like to add, and let me say this, in East Texas, I can almost guarantee you yard waste numbers are a little bit higher than 12%. But we could look at lowering that to 31% actually going to the landfill if we figured if we diverted that yard waste to the compost site. And I'm gonna tell you, we have one of the best compost sites in the state of Texas. I mean, I would put it up against almost any of them. There's a few that are real successful, and ours is one of those. I'm very proud of that. So let's talk about our recommendation. We would recommend that we go to a fully automated collection system. Now, fully automated, and I just want to make sure and stress this, fully automated means it's inside the can, that we would not have somebody riding on the truck to get out and deal with things. So we would build it in a way where when that truck arrives at a home, it services that can from the cab. There's no interaction that needs to take place at that address. Some of the things that that would include would be, still, it's collected weekly. We want to give customers the ability to adjust their service as they need. They have a large family and they need more carts. They can rent those carts for...a garbage cart for $5 a month and recycling for three. So if they want to recycle more, it's cheaper to do that. For those people that have, um, trouble dealing with the larger cart, we want to make a 35-gallon cart available, and you can see it here. It's much smaller compared to the 65-gallon. We would no longer be able to service the recycling bins, the small bins, because that takes us getting out of the truck and actually manhandling that to make it work. We would like to change the collection times. Right now, we tell people it has to be out by 7:30 in the morning for us to service it. We tell them between 7:00 PM the night before and 7:00 in the morning. Give them a little bit more flexibility. We were not able to do that if we allowed bags out, because then the animals tear it up and it adds to the litter problem. We really wanted to control that. But if everybody's got it in a cart, then we can make that flexibility so it can be set out the night before. Improperly placed or blocked carts would not be able to be serviced. Right now, we're going around that car, and we're rolling it around to deal with it and get it collected. We wouldn't be able to do that. We'd have to ask people, hey, if it's trash day, don't park in front of it. Wouldn't be able to get to it. And like I stated, all garbage and recycling would be inside the cart. And the citizens must use a city-provided cart. We don't need a lot of different type carts out there. We need to be the city ones that are designed for those automated trucks. Let's talk about bulky waste. There's just a couple of changes with it. The main thing right now is that we allow weekly pickup of bulky item. So that means at a home, they can call every week and get it. Most citizens aren't using that. It's an avenue that some, maybe a landlord might use. Okay, I'm gonna set it out quite a bit. Uh, but this would limit that from those type of operations, and it would be just the customer. And most citizens won't have four bulky items at their home in a year's time. So it allows us to control that a little bit better. We're gonna increase the size of the collection. Right now, we do four cubic yards. So if you imagine the back of a pickup truck, not full, but to the bed, that would be about four cubic yards. We're gonna double that to eight, make that a little bit bigger pickup. And we also want to add the ability for those extra pickups. So I've done my four that I got as part of my base service, but I need another one. Or, let's say I'm a commercial operation who's not had the ability to use bulky item at all in the past. Now they can say, okay, I'd like to request one, and we would just charge them $50 for the first four yards and 25 for each additional. The bulky item would continue to be a call-in service, though. Yard waste, like I said, we have a lot of yard waste. And we would really, our recommendation is that that be diverted from the landfill. Right now, it just goes to the landfill. It's buried in that hole. The way we can do that is if it's...if plastic bags are not involved. If I can collect it without plastic bags, then I can take it to the compost site for it to be processed out there. So what we're gonna recommend is that plastic bags not be allowed, that they need to be placed curbside in either a paper bag, which all of the big retailers will sell. You know, Home Depot has their model of paper bags, Walmart does, and all those. Um, and so all we need to do is let them know, hey, our system changed, and they'll make them available at their stores. And I think they run 40 cents a piece, something like that. Or, and those people that, hey, I can't afford to buy the bags, but I have some cans, just mark those cans yard waste and just put that waste inside there. That way, we can pick it up. We don't have any plastic involved, and we can get it to the compost site. So this will allow us to divert everything that we collect for yard waste out to the compost and get it out of that waste stream. And so that's about it. That is the proposal, so...I'm ready for questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I first have a comment. I absolutely love the compost idea. I think that's fantastic and a really wonderful solution that solves the problem that we have, because I had a whole lot of calls yesterday after the article came out with people wondering about, why am I gonna get charged to pick up my yard waste? And you're not, and it's still gonna be collected weekly. This is a really wonderful solution to help recycle those things and get them to our compost that we should be using. So that's my comment. My question is, how are we going to educate people about the changes that would be...we'd be making? And then how would we deal with the people that are not gonna get picked up once we start doing fully automated? So what's the system for easing people in and educating?
You know, one of the mistakes that I made, and I have to take credit for that, is when we went to the new system, we changed everything, and we did it all at one time, and we do not want to do that again. And so what we'll be doing is we'll implement...we'll implement a system where, okay, we've gotten the recommendation of where we need to go from council. So now we need to put some teams together, and we need to decide the process of how we're gonna get there. But even when we get there and we say, okay, the rule is, you know, yard waste has to be dealt with in this way, we're gonna launch that at a time where yard waste is really light, and we're gonna spend a lot of time in neighborhoods with tags and with, you know, even visiting with people at their home to make sure that they understand the rules and how they have changed. It's really important that we do a better job educating as we go forward so that they understand. And that's, and like I said, that's something that we really, I wish we'd have done a better job of before, but this time, we won't do that again.
So when would we be considered fully automated, then? Like, when if I put my cart out in the inappropriate manner, would you not pick it up? When would that start?
My goal is that that would all be in place before October 1, but we're gonna really take our time to get there.
Okay.
If we get there sooner, then we'll go there sooner. But if we...if we're at a point where we're gonna be surprising a lot of citizens, then I don't want to do it too early. I want to make sure that they're ready, that we've got them geared up. Those people that want, we'd probably start, one of the first things is offer the smaller cart, and so that we can get that out, and so those people that are not using a cart now could start using them with the understanding that, you know, we're gonna be going to a system where it'll have to be within that cart. And then we'll just...and we'll phase them in, you know, we'll probably do the changes in the bulky item. It'll probably be the very first thing we do, okay? And this is, you know, we're gonna change that, because it's gonna...all that's gonna really affect is those people that are taking advantage of the system now. And so we'll work those steps through there so that when we get to October 1 or before, it's not a big surprise. That's real important. Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
I assume you're going to have a small recycle bin and a small trash bin?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll both be available. They'll both be...and they'll look like these. They'll be black with the different color lids, exactly the same.
Now, what are we gonna do with all the trash that's put around a bin and we're not going to pick it up? We're just gonna leave it there and...I mean...
Well, I think part of the education process is to teach people how to manage the waste at their house. Because we...most people understand that if you manage that, and if you're...and if you're recycling, you can...that's more than enough space. You don't really have extra that needs to go in there. The big thing that you hear people go, wait a minute, what about my yard waste? Well, that's why we addressed that separately as a different service. We wanted to get it completely away from that service.
Or they could rent another bin for $5 a month.
And they can rent, and their family needs, you know, four or five of them. That's fine.
Well, 90% of the time, I'm about half-full, maybe.
Yeah, most people are, I think.
But there's other times when I'm right up to the brim and maybe have a sack or something that's...that won't fit in there. So it may be interesting for some big families to...but like you said, they can rent another bin, but if it's not on a regular basis, uh...
Well, if we allow...
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
If we allow that one bag outside, if we set any limit allowing anything outside, that means we have to put somebody on the back, and we lose that savings. That's...
The good thing about the recycle, though, it's not gonna spoil from week to week like your garbage would. So if you have to put it out, if you have to take some of it back for one week or so and put it in the next week's bin, we're not gonna have spoiled garbage all over the streets and animals chasing it and those kind of things. So that will be...I understand your concern, though, David, because there are times when I certainly fill up more than one bin, but most of the time, I don't. So, yeah, that's just a little bit of planning. And Dwayne, hold on, let me go ahead. Mr. Allen, were you through, David? Were you through?
Yeah.
You sure?
Okay.
Mr. Allen.
All right. Two years ago, I was scared we would come to this point. When we originally set the program up, you could continue to use your small blue bin. The trucks were purchased with the idea that a person would be on the rear, and this would facilitate the use. Now, what we've all seen when you drive around, we've got more stuff than we need. Look at all these rental places that rent little things, that rent...what do you call the rental? I mean, the storage units, storage units are all over town. We all...we all fill up our garages. We don't get rid of the stuff. We go rent a storage unit. Our first concern starting out was if you put two of these big containers in a garage, you're just not gonna have room. And a lot of people, and we're going to smaller lot lines, we're going to more compact operations. Now, you did say that right now we're using the large trash bin, and you've got the small bin here. Could you use the small bin, I think you said, for both the trash and recycling in case you've got a limited amount of area?
Yes. So, yeah, if a citizen just couldn't deal with the big one or didn't choose to, then they could use the smaller ones.
All right, what if they feel that they don't have area inside their garage or a contained area to put this? Is it gonna be against the regulations for them to set it outside their garage door? Can they...can it be out in the weather, so to speak, or does it have to be inside the garage?
That is one of...that's one of the questions that we want to go and get that committee gathered and make sure. We didn't pass those rules originally because we knew that there was probably gonna be some correction that needed to be made. What that was gonna be, we weren't sure at the time. But now we're at the point where, okay, we're building the plan. This is it. And then we're gonna need to go ahead and make sure we have regulations in place to cover that. I think the intent was that it needs to be at least on the side of your home.
Well, maybe if it was not visible driving down the street, but I think there are people that have garages full of stuff that they can just barely get their automobile in there that if they have any...they would like for their container to be outside. All right, now, this is just a small item, but this is the business I was in forever. If you go back to your original slide, could you put that back up there? Where you had the pie? All right. You're showing recyclables, metal. Several times, we have put out metal coat hangers, and they told us, no, those are not recyclable. They had to go in the trash. I mean, I realize it's just 8%. Is this a change in policy or is there something different?
Well, it is a little bit confusing, because we were originally told, yes, hangers are fine. Uh, but, and I think they felt like they were gonna be fine. But then the hangers started going down the conveyor belt, and you know, the problems that probably came from that hanger catching on things. So it created enough a problem they had, so, okay, never mind, we can't do hangers.
So the hangers aren't...
So there's probably a small percentage of that.
All right, what about the tin cans?
All of those, yes, sir.
Tin cans, aluminum cans?
That's the good stuff.
So all metal can be in that...okay. All right. Well, again, I have down here improper...on the road, you said if they...if they place them in an improper place, in other words, if they're not spread apart, uh... How strict are we gonna be? I mean, if they're three and a half foot and the crane knocks one of them over, are we gonna drive on down the road to the next place?
We're really talking about them right next together. When they're next together, we can't service them. We have to get out of the truck to go move them. Those guys can usually fit them in pretty good, but we need people to think four-foot. That's what we need them thinking, and that gives us plenty of room. But those guys are getting much better with those arms. They can get them in places that they used to not be able to. But if they're sitting right next together, you have to get out, and so we don't want that to happen.
Do you have some kind of notice or something? How does a person know if they come by that evening and their bins are close together and their trash was not picked up? Is there...how do we tell them the problem was they were too close together?
We will not leave anything at the curb without letting them know why.
Do we have a...
We have cards now. We have tags. We have different types of tags. We have tags for recycling and tags for trash, and we have tags for...you have a bulky item pickup. We want to let you know that we're putting that on the bulky list. We've gotten in trouble a couple of times picking up bulky and not getting a call, so now we let them know.
Well, we have a trial run period. I mean, we're not just gonna start Monday morning leaving the stuff on the side. We have a trial run period where we will have another personnel on the rear of the truck in order to facilitate, tell the people really learn how important this is. I mean, they're not gonna like leaving their...they're gonna see you drive by, and you're gonna go on down the road. What the world's he doing? Why didn't he stop?
Right. Oh, yeah, we get them. We get those calls now. Uh, we get those calls. We pass the house, there's nothing there, and then we get the call, you missed. And then they'll set it out. So we...that's part of business. That's part of one of the things that we need to deal with. But we are not...we're not gonna get you to take a look at the rules and sign off on the rules, and then we're gonna go out there and start enforcing the next day. We cannot do that. We gotta spend time, okay, these are the rules. Now we gotta get everybody on board and get them. And we'll spend a lot of time with the guy on the back, because he's gonna spend a lot of time putting tags on carts.
Now, you've got, on your pickups, on your bulky item pickups, did you say, was it four yards, eight times? Go back to that, uh...yeah, eight times per year.
Well, four times per year, eight cubic yards at a time.
Oh, four times? Okay.
Yes.
We get 32. All right, four times per year. How are you gonna keep track of that? If I call in one month, and I wait two weeks later, you pick it up? Then I call in two weeks later, and you pick up another one? How are you gonna keep track?
Well, we've got some software there at the office that we use. We track all work orders, and we'll use that to track this as well. If somebody calls, they've used up their four, and another resident moves in there, then we're gonna verify that there's a new resident in there, and then their four will start at that point.
Okay. I apologize, but I've got some questions here.
Oh, please, yeah.
All right. Uh, the plastic bags seems to be a big change. That you can buy a roll of plastic bags for $5 or $3? I mean, what is one of the big rolls of plastic bags? They're pretty cheap. All right. Now, when you go to, uh...when you go to paper sacks, you mentioned, what, 40 cents each or something like that?
About 40 cents.
All right.
But if you buy decent bags, you're paying...you're not paying 40 cents, but you're not...they're not real cheap either.
Okay. Well, I hope my wife buys decent bags. They do stay together.
The ones that we pick up by the handle, leave everything at the curb, that's a problem.
No, no, that's not...all right. This is gonna...are you...is there a...the trash service people, and is there gonna be a limit on how many of these paper bags they can leave at the residence when they do yard waste, when they do yard service?
No, but I think it'll be a diver...I think it would be cheaper for a yard waste company to get maybe an enclosed box on their trailer that they can put their leaves on and take them to the compost or take them somewhere and dispose them, rather than putting them in paper bags. I don't think yard waste companies are gonna want to, and I think that's why we did it. We wanted yard waste companies to find another solution than...because we know that they were taking them from one resident and maybe even charging them for disposal and taking them somewhere else. And we have to stop that.
The paper sacks under the yard waste will be included in this 32 cubic yards that you can pick up in a year?
No, it's unlimited for...if it's in...
Oh, excuse me.
If I can take it to the compost, I have no problem. I don't need a limit on it.
But the city will pick it up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's gonna be a big change. Uh, plastic bags, bags of plastic, um... Okay, that's gonna be a big change. Uh, plastic bags, bags, plastic, um... Another road we're going down. You know, this, this is, it's been a, uh, it was amazing. I used to go to TML several years back and tell them we did all hand trash pickup, and, and we did a good job at it. And they said, "Well, you're the last one we've ever heard of." And they said, "You better look at these trucks, 'cause before you know it, you're gonna be owning some of them."
Yes, sir.
Um, I think that's...
I, I really think, and just, just to speak to that, if, if we had not made that change, we talked about that dollar rate increase. It would've been pretty dramatic. We'd have seen it almost every year.
Backing up originally, the, the con, the purpose of this change was to increase recycling. That was the purpose of the change. And we couldn't increase recycling with the small containers we had at the time. You just, you just couldn't do it.
Yep, that's right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moore.
Now, our yard waste pickup days weekly, will be, will they be the same day that our, our regular recycle and garbage?
Yes, sir. The only thing we're gonna do, and, and I, I haven't spoken of this yet because it's more of a plan. We'd like to get it to where a, a day comes where you don't have to call in for your bulky item either. And so, the intent would be that the yard waste companies would come through and they would, or the yard waste service would come through, and they would look for, any yard waste needs to be picked up, and if they see bulky, then they would report that, and then, bulky would be collected the next day. But everything else will be that day.
Okay. And I assume we'll, we'll use our rear loaders for yard waste pickup?
Yes, sir.
Two-man, three-man crew, what?
It'll be a three-man crew. It, it will be a, it'll be a two-man crew during the time, during most of the year. But when the yard waste gets heavy, it'll be three, and we'll have extra trucks.
Okay. And then, a question, I got a call this morning from, uh, from a resident having to do with folks that leave their carts out on the curb, you know, day in, day out, days at a time. We, we have that $5 complaint-driven...
And, and it actually takes a little while to get it to work, but it works.
Does it?
It does take a little while because you have to, you know, the, you almost have to do it for a month before they get the first bill and go, "What's this?" And then, they call down, "Why did I get charged $10 for last month?" Well, that's because it was two separate times we tagged you. We told you, "You'd get the $5 fee if you didn't move it," so...
And that'll be on their water bill.
Be on their water bill.
So, you tag them when, uh, like...
We get a call from a citizen that says, "Hey, my neighbor hadn't put it out."
So, it is complaint-driven, you come back and tag. All right.
And we usually, what we do that first day, we get that first call, is we go out there and just put a tag on it, and go, "Please put it back." You know, just, we need to do that. And then, we check it at another time to see if it's out on a day that's not their pickup day. And then, at that point, we say, "Hey, if it's not out, if it's not put back in twenty-four hours, we're gonna have to go ahead and charge you the $5." And then, we come back twenty-four hours later and charge them. So, if you think about the labor involved, just tagging them, we've put more than that in there, but, but it's a, it's a good deterrent.
And you do not anticipate eliminating the ability to store the carts on the side of the house? 'Cause I got no room in the garage.
Well, I...
There's one of my guys right there.
Most cities do that. Most cities allow them to be on the side of the homes. And so, I would think that when our committee meets, that that's probably where we're gonna end up going.
Okay, glad to hear that.
Please. Uh, if you pass somebody's trash, uh, if they haven't gotten their trash out, and you get a call, "We didn't get our trash out. Come back and pick my trash up." Do you go back and pick up people's trash?
We, we do, yes, sir. We, we don't want to.
Don't say that too loud.
Yeah, I know. We don't want to, and we do like to spend a little time, please, help us out by setting it out when it needs to be out. Because now, we have to spend that time to go and get that collected. If you just make sure it's out, it sure help us out. And so, and I think allowing people to put it out the night before is gonna be helpful, too.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's probably going to really mess you up if you start doing that with people.
Well, we've done it for many years, where if we get the call, you know, we wanna take care of our customers. It's real important that we do. And so, i-if we got that call from that same address three times in a row, we probably wouldn't anymore. But we do like to try to take care of them when we can and say, "Okay, we'll, we'll get that handled."
You have capacity at the compost facility to ha, to handle this increased amount of, of yards?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we're looking forward to it. Yeah.
Just come in, please.
Please.
I think it's great, uh, that you guys are willing to accommodate, but I think a degree of accountability from all citizens is gonna be necessary in order to make this work.
Yeah, it will. It will.
Thank you.
Great comments, counsel. And, and Dwayne, communication, communication, communication. And you, and you, you obviously understand that. And I, and I appreciate you recognizing the, I don't wanna say mistakes, the, the shortcomings we had last time. Let's, let's correct those this time. And I also wanna just say, thank you for listening to these problems and coming up with what appears to be a very well-thought-out solution. And there's gonna be bumps in the road. We know that. But you know, as long as you're, and I can tell you, your department and your guys are some of the most accommodating people in our entire city. They, they do a job that is underappreciated, but yet, they do it, and they do it very, very well. And I appreciate that, and I, and I want them to understand that. And I think the citizens will accept, agree with that as well. Um, the only way to make this system work, as we've been talking about, is to be fully automating. Otherwise, this system will not work, and we'll continue to have increases in our fees year after year after year. So, this will take a little bit of change with our citizens. It will. But unless you want fee increases repeatedly, this is the way we must go. And it's, it's the way that the system was designed to work. And we've been, we've been very accommodating up to this point, but it's time to get serious about becoming streamlined. Um, I think the choice of the size of the bins is fantastic. And the fact that, you know, I know people are gonna say, "Well, I like my little blue bin." But you know what? This has wheels, and everyone should be able to carry that a lot easier. They can carry the bins out with no wheels. So, I think that's very well-thought-out. Um, I do have one concern. The bulky item, four pickups per year. And, and you said something about if, if a resident changes, then you'll see that, and you'll give them four more. I think you really need to rethink that because what that's doing, that's allowing these landlords to get free bulky item. What if they change residents twenty times a year in, in, in the single house, and they get four times per, that's not right. I, I think we need to look at that because I think that's going to, that's gonna be a way that they're gonna circumvent our system, and that's gonna, it's gonna bog us down. So, I think you need to come up with a system where an address gets four per year. And if they change tenants more than four times per year, that's gonna be the landlord's responsibility. 'Cause all they're doing is throwing the stuff out that nobody else wanted. I'm not saying that's solution. I'm just saying, think of that, I think there's gonna be a kink in the system. So, I want us to just think about that as we move forward, to see if we might come up with, um, a solution to that problem. Maybe you go to, you know, give them two more or whatever. But if you do it unlimited, every time they change an address or an occupant, the address changes, you could be picking that house up twenty times a year. 'Cause it's not unusual for them to change tenants. Every time the month comes around, they don't pay their rent. So, you know, be aware of that scenario, okay?
Yes, sir.
But thank you for, um, thank you for listening. Thank you for the, for the great counsel comments as well. You've used all your time, Mr. Allen. I'm sorry, we're gonna move on. No, please.
I'm, I'm still thinking of the commercial services do yard cleanup. Uh, it's gonna be a definite change for them. What are you gonna do? The guy does a yard cleanup, and he puts it in a plastic bag. Uh, he cannot take it to the compost. He'll, he'll either dump it out somewhere down the road, or he'll take it to the city landfill, uh, which is gonna be a big transition. Now, assuming that he uses the paper bags, what will, what is his, what are you gonna charge him when he gets to the compost facility? He's got a, he's got a hundred, a hundred and fifty paper bags full of yard waste. How, how do you, how are you gonna do that?
If he's a yard service, then they, they are charged at the compost site. It's not, it's not free for yard services. It's free for our citizens. And we do have yard waste services that say, "Well, I've got the water bill" or something from that resident. But it's really designed for the resident to have that use.
Yeah, but, but there are a lot of lawn services all over town. I mean, we, we understand.
In other towns nearby. That's one of the issues we have. That's the reason why we charge at the compost now, is because we couldn't guarantee you where that yard waste came from.
Okay. What, what do you currently charge at the compost facility for yard waste?
I, I think so, seven fifty per yard.
Okay, but you are currently doing that now?
Yes, sir.
And that would be the same if the yard service brings in a trailer load of, of, uh, paper bags with yard waste?
Yeah. They can bring in plastic bags, too, but they have to take the bags with them.
Yeah.
All we want is just the yard waste left there. And we have lots of them that do that. We have a lot of residents that do that. They'll carry out the, the plastic bag, cut them open, dump them, take the bags back with them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
All right, thank you all.
Okay. Time for a public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Good to see you back, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard. Uh, it's good to be back. Just kinda give you a little update on, uh, some things that we've been involved with in the police department since my last, uh, update. Uh, as you may have heard, uh, November twenty-fourth, I promoted Lieutenant Anthony Boone to Assistant Police Chief Anthony Boone, and he's here tonight. Uh, Anthony's gonna be a great asset, uh, along with Chief Samples and myself to the command staff in the police department. Um, and I'd encourage you to, to reach out to Anthony if there's something that, that he can assist you with. Anthony's, uh, currently assigned over our patrol operations. Uh, so, he'll have all the, the patrol watches along with our special operations division. So, uh, it's great to have Anthony on board as Assistant Chief. Um, the last two months, our par officers and code enforcement, uh, have been working together. Again, we ran a couple of other, uh, operations. We ran a, a small one up on Bernice Street with just the par officers where they identified some violations up there and issued twenty-one citations. We ended up serving fifteen city warrants. Uh, and then, also made seven arrests during that, uh, uh, little operation up there. And that's an area that we've had a lot of complaints from in the neighboring area. And, uh, we tried to address some of those needs up there. Uh, then, on December first, our par officers in conjunction with code enforcement ran another code sweep for Miss Noddy in the Stamper Park area. Uh, during that operation, they ended up identifying thirty-five, uh, junk and litter cases, fifty-one junk vehicles, uh, three hive grass and weeds, uh, three stagnant waters, four zoning violations, and five issues with no sewer or running water, um, in some of the residents. This is probably not the best slide to show after Dwayne's presentation, but this is, this is some of the, the photographs that were, uh, taken during that operation down there. And, uh, it gives you an idea on what some of the violations were that they, uh, that they addressed down there. A couple of days ago, I was contacted by our Longview Transit Department, and they wanted me to highlight a program that we have that we work in conjunction with the transit, Longview Transit on. And that's our Longview Cops and Transit. I don't know if, if many of you knew that, uh, every month, our par officers will take turns, and they will ride the public transit system. Sometimes, they will do that in uniform. Sometimes, they will do that in plain clothes. Um, and we work in conjunction with the transit department to carry out their mission to ensure that, that our riders have a safe environment with the transit system, help reduce fear, uh, and to promote confidence in riding, uh, the public transit system. And that seems to be a good program in working with transit and, uh, helping them out with some of the issues that they have uh, in public transit. Many of you have seen many police departments, uh, that have been creating safe zones, safe exchange zones for individuals that, um, that buy things over the internet, over, uh, online garage sales, Craigslist, things of that, and then, have to meet up with individuals somewhere in the community to make this exchange. We've created a, a safe exchange zone with the police department. Um, here soon, we'll have some signs. This will be a similar sign that will be placed. The safe zone that we're gonna designate in front of the police department is gonna be between, uh, the flagpoles here. There's already some parking signs there. We'll attach these signs to, um, these poles here. And individuals that are looking for a safe place to exchange with individuals that they may not know can do that right here in front of the police department. Uh, this area here is gonna be under twenty-four-hour surveillance by our surveillance, surveillance system within the, within the police department. Uh, so, it'll help provide a, a little added security uh, for those people that, uh, participate in these different, uh, exchange programs and selling things over the, uh, over the internet. So, we'll have this, uh, up and running here soon. Um, our Blue Santa program, I wanna thank everybody that's donated either monetarily or, uh, by donating toys to the Blue Santa program. This year, we're gonna be able to reach out and serve a hundred and seventy-four children, uh, through our Blue Santa program. Uh, we are still, uh, accepting monetary and new unwrapped toys. Uh, those donations will be accepted until December twenty-fourth. And if anybody's interested in donating, they can contact our par officer, Misty Ryan, at nine oh three, three three one, twenty-five, forty-one. And that's a good program, and it's something the officers look forward to each year, getting out there and helping support the children in our community. Couple of weeks ago, Mrs. Shihara contacted, uh, us and asked us again if we would participate in our second year, uh, of a charity bowling night, uh, against the fire department. Um, and we did this last year, and I, I, uh, we had Sergeant Hazel, Chief Boone, Lieutenant Bowen, and Sergeant Farmer, uh, volunteered for the second year, and I gave them one mission, and that was to beat the fire department. We don't ever beat the fire department. We lose to them in golf. We lose to them, uh, and everything. But, uh, they did a great job. They come back first overall. We had a first individual high score and a third individual high score, too. And we appreciate the invitation, and I know they look forward to it uh, each year for the Doors fundraiser. National Night Out. Uh, back in October, we had National Night Out. Uh, we did receive a letter from National Town Watch Association as an outstanding participant. Uh, Longview ranked fifteenth out of the thirty-six cities nationwide with a population of fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. So, we went from nineteenth last year to, uh, fifteenth this year. And, uh, working in conjunction with partners of prevention and, and the citizens and everybody that held a National Night Out party, uh, we did, we did very well this year, and we're looking to approve upon that for next year. Open carry seminars. Uh, here in just a little bit, I'll do another presentation on open carry in a, a presentation here in a little bit. But as you know, January first, we've had a change in legislation to the concealed handgun carry, uh, which is now gonna be an open carry. Uh, that law goes into effect on January first. Um, so, we've, we've put together a program for the citizens of Longview, those that would be interested in learning a little bit more about the legislation and how it's gonna impact them and how it may impact business owners. Uh, and we set some dates to, uh, to do that on December nineteenth, which is a Saturday at ten AM. Again, on December twenty-first, uh, which is a Monday night at six PM. And then, December twenty-second, on a Tuesday night at, uh, six PM. And these will be held at, uh, in the Idelman Room, uh, at the MODCOP Convention Center at one hundred Grand Boulevard. So, those that might be interested in learning a little bit about the legislation, um, we would certainly invite them to come out and, uh, participate in these seminars. And then, to close out, uh, the men and women of the Longview Police Department, I'd like to wish y'all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, we'll be out there, uh, over the holidays and, uh, would like to have everybody have a safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Stillman.
Mayor Mack, counsel, Mr. Willard, I feel like I should explain something on this whole bowling thing. And I, I knew I shouldn't have taken that picture. I knew it would come back to haunt me the minute I snapped it on my phone. And I can't prove it, but one of our bowlers is a SWAT medic, and there was a SWAT call out about fifteen minutes before the bowling started that pulled him away from our team. So, we'll, we'll work that out. My wife actually filled in as our fourth bowler, and she's not the best bowler in the world, but I've got a year, I've got a year to hone her skills. So, just in case that happens again next year. I think I'm on to them, but that's all. Congratulations to them. They, they did. They, they whooped us pretty good, and I'll, I'll, I'll admit defeat. Our, uh, this is the last time you're gonna hear me get up and talk about this, our, our annual subscription program. Time is running out. You basically have about thirteen days, business days left, uh, in the remainder of the year if you're interested in registering for this program. So, if, if you haven't done it yet and you're interested, please, uh, please get to it, and you can reach our EMS section at nine oh three, two three seven, one two three two to get that taken care of. They're happy to help you. Our department is also participating with an annual toy drive. We partner up every year, and we've done this for the past several years, with the Department of Family Protective Services here in town. And, uh, we do one big toy drive, and this one is gonna be this Saturday, December the twelfth, from nine to five at the Longview Mall parking lot. Uh, we encourage our residents that have time and then have a desire to help out our community to bring a new unwrapped toy by, and our firefighters will be there working that all day to collect that and make sure that it gets to a child that is gonna go without this Christmas. Uh, we're, we're very pleased, and that's been a very successful program, and we're happy to help out in our community that way. We received a, a letter of thank you from one of our state representatives, and, and I'm probably gonna butcher this name a little bit, but John S... going to butcher this name a little bit, but John Syrier is how I would say that, but that may be totally wrong. He represents the area around Bash Drop, who we went down and helped them get their wildfires under control back in October. We were certainly pleased to get this, and like I said, it was way bigger than just the Longview Fire Department going to help, there were departments from all over the state, but we're certainly happy that we could play a role in helping them get that situation under control. And on an associated note, we're so fortunate here in our community to have so many local partners in the private sector. This is an example of a check display, you guys approved us receiving this money, it was a check for $2,500 from Flint Hills Resources out in the South Industrial District out by Texas Eastman off of Huntsman Way. They donated $2,500 to the department to help us really enhance and improve some of our equipment needs in terms of our wildland firefighting capabilities. Flint Hills is a subsidiary of Coke Energy, so we're certainly proud to have partners like this that are willing to step in and help in our community. We too have had a lot of movement with our personnel. The pictures you see up here, the one on the left, is one of our fire explorers. Now, this is a young man that started exploring in our department as a new teenager, and he's probably, I know for a fact, he's seeking a career in the fire service, but went through our explorer program and our local explorer post and graduated from the fire academy back in November, class number 96. And then the picture on the right are three of our newer employees, Joshua Flanagan, Graham Wolfe, and Joseph Piddico, who also graduated from class 96 that night. And these guys are finishing up their orientation and ready to go to work here in the city to help us fill some vacancies that we've had. We've also had some promotions, we've had a changing of the guards somewhat, and this is something from time to time, this was a big group, and there were six of them that promoted. And I tell you, as the fire chief, this is one of the things, this is one of the funner things that I get to do that I've come to appreciate, because I've seen a lot of these guys come up through the fire service, I've had the opportunity to teach a lot of them in that basic fire academy, and to see them growing and taking on a higher degree of responsibility in our department, these guys are the future. I'm an old guy, you know, my years are limited here, and these guys have a long career still left ahead of them, and I'm pleased when I see the caliber of people that are coming up through our ranks to eventually take, like I said, a higher degree of responsibility and help keep our department moving forward. So I'd like to congratulate John Eric Johnson there on the left, who promoted from lieutenant to captain, Sam Turner, who promoted from driver engineer to lieutenant, Josh Phillips, who promoted from lieutenant to captain, Mike Killingsworth promoted from driver engineer to lieutenant, Brian Vickery, driver engineer to lieutenant, and Kerry Fletcher firefighter paramedic to driver engineer. So this was round one, we'll have another big round of this come in probably first quarter of next year. And the same opportunity that day, we had to swear in some of our new employees, so there's our three guys that just graduated from the fire academy again, Piddico, Wolfe, and then the fourth one over there is Flanagan, plus two other guys that hired in as fire apprentices, Christopher Turney and Samuel Morton, who was also one of our original fire explorers. So it's pretty cool to see that program working and engaging these kids as young teenagers and seeing them follow through with that dream of being a firefighter and eventually coming to work. And that's all I've got, I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay? Thank you.
Chief Bishop, I love your innovation. The airlines have air marshals, we have bus marshals. I love it, thank you for that. Chief Stillman, know that I am now enrolled in your EMS system. Is there any way I get to designate who I want to come to my house in case I need mouth-to-mouth? Because there are some that I do not want coming, let me die, okay? Okay? All right, I'll get with you on that. And also, along with your toy drive, I commend you all for that, both of you all. And just so you know, and chief, I'm going to do something for yours as well, but for Chief Stillman, at my office, we're offering anyone that brings a toy to our office between now and the toy drive on Saturday, you're in a drawing for a $100 gift certificate anywhere in the city of Longview that you'd like to spend your money. So if you bring a toy to our office, you become eligible for the drawing that will be done tomorrow afternoon, so, and we'll, chief, we'll get one for yours as well, okay? Thank you all. Thank you, guys, we don't have the best chiefs ever, think about it. Thank you all so much. Okay, we're to consider an agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to pull off for discussion or separate consideration? Mr. Allen.
Items E and F.
E and F. Anyone else? Outside of items E and F, may I have a motion?
May I be approved?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, consider an ordinance adopting a new Article III to Chapter 33 of the Longview City Code to codify the city's program of pooling lots. Parker Harrison. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard, I'm just here to answer any questions I can.
Mr. Allen, what question do you have, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir, Mr. Herr. I seem to, the way I understand this, is we are authorizing the city of Longview to construct, erect, own, and build private residences which they will be in the process of leasing out, or excuse me, of renting on a month-to-month or whatever basis. Am I misreading that, or what is that in there?
No, sir, this program is for nonprofit homebuilding entities and for-profit homebuilding entities to be able to access these lots, to build them, and then sell them to a low, moderate-income household.
All right.
Not for renters at all.
Well, I understand, but the city, we're not authorizing the city to enter into that market and do any construction and be landlords themselves then?
No, we will not be, we could build the houses, it is written that we could build the house, but we will not or cannot rent the house out.
Why would we want to build the house?
To help the market to revitalize the South Longview.
That's what I have a problem with, why does the city of Longview want to get in the construction business, building private residences? I just, I think we've got, I mean, we don't, I don't think there's anybody that works for the city of Longview that needs to be building a private residence.
I'm confused, could you just speak to the purpose of why we're asking for the change? Maybe that would help me.
We're not saying we're going to, you said we could. This is for private people, I mean, we have the ability to, but we don't have plans to do that.
No, sir.
This is for private individuals or nonprofits to do this, not for city, we don't have any plans to go out and build houses.
But does this authorize us that we could go out and build a house?
We've always had that authorization.
We have had that?
In the past, the current read is only nonprofit organizations.
Okay.
The problem that has come up is that we only have one nonprofit organization that has the ability to tap into these lots. So we have 30 lots right now, and this list that are just sitting there, since I've been here, we've only sold one or transferred title to one.
Yeah, I have no objection to that, I would just have an objection whether or not it's in there or not for the city of Longview entering into the position where they would construct a private home. That would be my, you know, and I'm just, that'd be my opposition, I don't think we need to be entering into, the city of Longview needs to be constructing private homes.
Duly noted.
All right.
Okay. Is there a motion on item E?
May I be approved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F?
I think same thing.
It's the same thing, so you're good with that?
Yes.
May I be approved, F?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you all. Mr. Allen, very good question, thank you for the clarification, we appreciate that. Okay, are we to zoning now? Okay, we have planning and zoning section, we have a public hearing to consider application Z 15-18. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a rezone from multifamily, seen here in this pink-purple, to general retail for approximately 20 acres located on the east side of Gilmer Road, south of, east side of Gilmer Road, south of Fairmont. Gilmer Road is a principal arterial which is appropriate for retail type uses. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This item requires a public hearing which is now open, I have one speaker card. King Gidry.
Aye, King Gidry, representing 315 properties, and I'm just here if you have any questions.
Oh, perfect, thank you, Mr. Gidry. Any questions or comments, council? Public hearing is now closed, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now held to consider application Z 15-19. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family two to multifamily two to allow for an addition located at 111 Ruth Lynn. This is currently a nursing home facility. When the facility was built, nursing homes were allowed in the single-family zoning district in the 70s. The zoning ordinance was changed, therefore this nursing home is non-conforming. In order to build the addition, they would have to come into compliance with zoning, so they are requesting this rezone at this time. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing which is now open, are there any speaker cards, council? Public hearing is now closed, may I have a motion?
May I be approved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing to hold considering application PD 15-15. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 1506 to revise a site plan to allow for a drive-through window and adjustments to building sizes located on the south side of East Loop 281 between Judson Road and Airline. The applicant has previously submitted a planned development site plan that was approved by city council in July, so you all have seen this before. The original site plan proposed a 5,557-square-foot building for Site 3 and for Site 4, they were about the same, they were the same size. He has come back with an approximately 9,000-square-foot building here and approximately 3,000-square-foot building here on this Site 4 with a drive-through window. As stated in the previous planned development, a solid evergreen shrubbery and four-foot solid fence will be provided along the south property line along Skyline. One direct driveway access will be permitted to Skyline from Cathy Street, seen here. Cathy Street, Clay Street, and all alleys will be abandoned. Loop 281 is a principal arterial which is appropriate for this type of development. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommends approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing which is now open, any speakers? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Tibbetts, and I live at 118 Skyline Drive, which is basically across from those, more or less. So I have a couple of comments and questions. Right now, since these restaurants have been going in, we have so many people running up and down Skyline. They're not going at 35 miles an hour, they are going at 50 and 60 miles an hour, so I know the police are here and I know I can't address them, however, I will kind of sort of do it, because if they want money for tickets, listen, they can come and sit in my driveway and they will get rich, because those people just zoom, zoom, zoom up and down there, I'm telling you, it's bad. So we have young children on that street, they stand around the street and get on the school bus, they don't stay inside their yards, they stand on the streets. And I just think it's so dangerous. It is also dangerous for older people like us, we go out there and we have these big trucks coming up and down the street, I don't think they should be coming down the street. My husband has a motorcycle and he was almost run over by one of the supply trucks going into, I guess it was the Golden Corral. And it is just getting really dangerous, so now this street is open to Skyline, more, just for the drive-in, I'm assuming, more people are going to be coming around, circling around Skyline. Can we not have a stop sign on Skyline when it comes to this driveway, I mean, this road, this access road, so that people can't speed? Or a speed bump? Something on that street so that it can be controlled in some way. We've been there 16 years now, we have worked so hard on our house, doing everything ourselves, you know, getting rid of termites and replacing shingles and replacing the outside of the house, just everything, and it's taken forever. And now it's being turned into like a Speedway, and I just hate it. Do I want to move? No, we own our house, why in the world would I want a mortgage when we live there, okay, not for free, we have to pay taxes and insurance, but you know what I mean, we don't have a monthly outlay. So that's what I'm asking for, is some kind of consideration to keep that traffic slow.
Duly noted. We'll get with Ms. Choi, and we'll come up with a solution to your problems, okay?
Thank you.
Is that your speaker card?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry.
That's fine, we appreciate you coming in, and we will, duly noted, and we will make sure that is addressed, okay? Thank you for coming and visiting with us about that. And we don't want you to move either.
All right.
Okay, anyone else?
Could we be for sure what street? Talking about, Angela, would you show us for sure, she said the stop sign in intersecting street, what intersecting street is she talking about?
I think she means, yeah, I think she means Cathy and Skyline.
Cathy, it's the point where the arrow is now?
Yes, sir. This is Cathy, this is planned to be abandoned.
Oh, that is a through street there.
It is a street, but it's planned to be, they're planning to abandon it, so it'll be a driveway.
But it would be a driveway?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Ms. Choi.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Public hearing is now closed, is there a motion?
May I be approved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're to action items now. Consider an ordinance submitting Article 1 of Chapter 4, Article 2 of Chapter 25, Article 2 of Chapter 64 regarding handguns and other firearms on city premises. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, as I mentioned earlier, I have a brief presentation here for you concerning the House bill that's going to go into effect that's going to deal with open carry. The information that I'm going to provide in this short and brief presentation is going to give you the information that's going to pertain specifically to government buildings. Towards the end of the presentation, I'll also touch a little bit on action item B as part of this presentation, and then we can answer any questions that you might have. As we know, on January 1st, House Bill 910 will take effect that will allow members of our community that possess a handgun license to carry a handgun exposed on their person. This is going to be something that's going to be new to us here with the city and also out in the community. As you know, we currently have a concealed handgun law, but this legislation here will now allow a person to carry a handgun exposed on their person. So what does open carry in Texas mean? The Texas Government Code 411 Subchapter H is where we derive the authority, or that gives the authority for a licensee to carry a handgun. The person must have a current concealed handgun license, which would be the new license that will be issued by DPS, will be just a handgun license, and basically what it does is it just takes off that word concealed. Those that currently have a concealed handgun license will be able to openly carry under the new legislation effective January 1 until DPS can cycle through the licenses. The handgun has to be either concealed carry, or if it's in plain view, the handgun has to be in a belt or shoulder holster, okay? Those are the two requirements for open carry, if they're going to carry it not concealed. House Bill 910, which will be in effect on January 1, 2016, modifies the current law relating to concealed handgun licenses. The bill eliminates the concealed open carry distinction, and it creates a license to carry a handgun. So what does that mean as far as open carry? There are some places that open carry will be prohibited, and there are some prohibited places for a license holder to carry, some places that will be prohibited. Some of those places are on the premises of a polling place on the day of an election or while early voting is in progress. Premises of any government court or offices utilized by the court unless pursuant to written regulations or written authorization of the court, and that would usually come from the judge that presides over that court. Each of these violations, if an individual was to violate them, would be a third-degree felony under the Texas Penal Code statute of 46.03. Another prohibited place for license holders to carry would be during government open meetings, okay? If the city provides notice in accordance with Texas Penal If the city provides notice in accordance with Texas Penal Code 30.06 and 30.07, this is referring to the wording that needs to be posted to prohibit individuals from carrying either open or concealed during a public meeting. 30.06 and/or 30.07 has to be posted at the door to the meeting room, and it is during the meeting, only if the meeting is an open meeting, subject to the Open Meetings Act. So, that would include meetings such as tonight, the council meeting, planning and zoning, or any other meetings that we would have that would need to be posted under the Open Meetings Act. The signage, I mentioned the signs that need to be posted under 30.06 and 30.07. The signs must be the exact language of the law, must be written in both English and Spanish, must be written in contrasting colors. They have to be block letters at least one inch in height, and they must be displayed in a conspicuous manner that is plainly visible to the public. Pursuant to Section 30.06 of the Penal Code, trespassed by a license holder with a concealed handgun, a person licensed under Subchapter H, Chapter 411 of the Government Code, may not enter this property with a concealed handgun once it's, once it's properly designated as such with the, with the wording. Well, let me, let me, let me back up here to the first one. 30.06 deals with the, with a concealed handgun license, or carrying a gun concealed, and 30.07 deals with carrying it open. So, because under the new legislation, you can carry open or concealed, you have to post both saying either concealed or open carry. So, it kind of sounds like we're saying the same thing twice, but it has to be worded that way. What does that mean is, from the city as an employer? The Texas Government Code and the Texas Labor Code does allow the city to prohibit its employees from carrying on the premises of employment, and an employee may generally leave a handgun in a private locked car in the parking lot. And this next slide here, it's kind of a slide we put in to deal with Action Item B about the change in the personnel policies and procedures. City of Longview Personnel Policies and Procedures 3.07, possession of weapons, basically recommended change that no employee, including employees licensed to carry a handgun, shall possess any weapon at any city worksite. It just removes the word concealed and, and listed as any handgun. There are some exceptions in the city policy that deal with peace officers. Possession of a firearm inside the employee's private vehicle, if you've looked at the policy, we do allow for that. And there's also the exceptions for some items that are used by the animal control officers that come into conflict with, with the ordinance. Just to let you all know, over the last couple of days, we've been doing training. Like I said, this is going to be new to city employees to have people come into city offices that may be openly carrying. So, over the last couple of days, we've completed training with close to 100 of city employees on how to react when confronted with the presence of individuals who are openly carrying. So, it's going to be something new for all of us, not only in the government buildings, but even for the police officers out in the field and how we, how we engage this. So, that's kind of a, a brief presentation on the government buildings, and we have a whole host of folks here. If we can answer any questions that you might have, we can.
Thank you, Chief Bishop. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I have questions. Chief, um, do, so anybody who's openly carrying supposedly has to be licensed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is that going to be a license, just like the concealed handgun license?
Yes.
Okay.
They have, they still have to go through the same process with DPS to get, to get the license.
Okay. Is there any kind of, so, they could walk through City Hall carrying, a, a citizen could, not an employee, but a citizen could walk through City Hall with a handgun on his belt or on a shoulder holster or something?
Yes, sir.
And is there any way, does he have to show a license or anything when he comes in here before he can walk in here?
No, there's no requirement to show the license.
So, it could be anybody really, just walking in off the street with a pistol, a sidearm, and, and there's no way of really knowing if they're licensed unless, for some reason, you guys were suspicious and asked them?
Right. And then we had to get involved. And that was part of our training with the city employees, that merely just seeing somebody carrying openly, you know, it's going to be new to everybody. So, we've talked to them about other things to watch for, you know, that make them feel uncomfortable if they were put in that position to, you know, to notify us and summon us and help work through some of the issues.
And anybody having any meetings that are going on in here, somebody could be standing outside the door. They couldn't come in here with a handgun or whatever, but they could stand right outside the door with a handgun, and, and really, nobody would know if they had, had a license to carry that gun unless they were asked by an officer.
Right. If it was a meeting that is not subject to the Open Meetings Act, then yes, they could. But if it's a council meeting or something like that, then, then no, they couldn't, once the, once we're properly.
Well, they couldn't be in here, but they could be right outside the door there.
Uh, well, that's, we, we've discussed that, and, and we still have to get, because sometimes when we have the chambers full, our overflow area now goes out there, so the meeting is kind of extended out into the lobby. So, these are just some of the legal issues that we're going to have to work through on that.
Okay.
One question?
Yes, sir.
What, what position does it have, does a person have to be that ask, do you have a license? I mean, can it be a, does it have to be a police officer? Can it be a, a, what, I mean, what, who can actually ask, I want to see your license?
It has to be a peace officer.
Does that include a constable, justice of peace, and stuff like that?
Yes. Anybody that's, that, under the Penal Code that is considered a peace officer. Now, anybody can ask, but, but the individual may not be obligated to show.
I wouldn't suggest that. No, 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 so it's just that. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Bishop, in order to be able to openly carry, you must possess a concealed license first.
Yes.
You cannot openly carry unless you've gone through the training, and the concealed license requires a course. You have to go to a course and be certified and pass the course. So, you can't just openly carry because they passed the law. You have to go to concealed carry first, then you can open carry.
And some background checks instead.
Absolutely, there is. It's very, it's very strict process.
To get licensed, there's background checks.
Yes, DPS does. They do the photographs, fingerprints, criminal history checks and all that.
Thank you, sir. You have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Consider An Ordinance Submitting Section 3.07, The Personnel Policy and Procedures Guide. Ms. Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Willard. Our current policy related to employees and possession of weapons has been in effect since October of 1997. And as Chief Bishop mentioned, it does prohibit city employees from carrying concealed weapons at any city worksite or in a city vehicle. With the change in the law and open carry, we need to come back to you and ask you to amend that policy to not only prohibit concealed, but prohibit open carry by those same rules. Passage of this ordinance will do that, so I will take any questions you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Miller? Thank you, Chief.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider a Resolution Accepting the Recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Concerning the Parks and Rec Outdoor Facility Use Guidelines. Mr. Karen?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Before we get into the actual policy itself, I wanted to kind of take a little bit of an overview as to how we got to where we are. And first thing is, the Parks and Recreation Department is here to provide a quality-of-life aspect of, of the city, and we try to do that through an efficient manner. And so, in doing so, we have to put some rules in place that allow for us to charge fees for services that are available. So, when we take a look at the, the things that we offer to our residents, we tried to come up with somewhat of a pricing policy so that we determine what should be charged and what shouldn't be charged. And so, what we've been working on is a pricing policy to be able to help us address that and do so in a fair manner moving forward. So, there are essentially three different services that are provided by the Parks and Recreation Department. The first one is the core and the public service, and those are just, just the open areas within our Parks Department, the trails, the playgrounds, and those kind of things. The users are seeing the same benefit, and the community benefits as a whole. And so, essentially, those are provided through the taxpayer base, so the taxes that everybody pays to our community, whether it's sales tax or property tax, those services are essentially provided by those, those fees. The second level then increases slightly to where there is a more individualized benefit, and in doing so, the, then there are increased costs to the department. And when that occurs, there does need to be some consideration of fees on those services that are then provided. And so, those typically have a recovery rate or, or a return on the investment of somewhere between 20 and 80 percent. And that's a pretty broad range, but it depends on the service that is being provided and what fees do need to be recovered from that. And then the last is the, the private or enterprise fee or service that is being provided. And that's more of your adult sports, and that's where the, the services that are provided are more on an individual basis. And certainly, there may be an overall community benefit, but really, the individual is the one that is benefiting from that service being provided. And those fees need to be recovered to the tune of 100 percent. Our, our goal that we've established for those is, is 120 percent, actually. That way, they can assist in offsetting some of those free services or other services that are provided for us. So, when we take a look at our athletic facility use policy, we've, we've had some significant improvements and updates to the policy. Previously, it was a, a pretty thick volume, and, and I have a couple of copies here, if you'd like to thumb through it. But we've, we've taken a very deliberate approach to developing this new policy. We actually started this back in August, and we have talked to dozens of, of tournament directors as well as the league associations. And we wanted to make sure that we are touching base with them every step along the way. And they have provided us with considerable amount of comment, and, and so, not only did we receive that comment, but we implemented it into the policy that we've put together before you. So, when we take a look at our, the leagues that are offered on, on our facilities, essentially, we have the four different ones, the four major ones being softball, baseball, soccer, and football. And as you can see from the, the top side of that, these are the expenses that we incur in providing those, those services to our community. And it's, it comes up to about $100,000 is what we spend in the direct cost of that. That doesn't include the utility cost, doesn't include any of our overhead and those kind of services that are provided for that. So, that's just the staff and the supplies and the products that are used to maintain our facilities. And then on the bottom side, you can see what, what we get in return. And again, these are services that I would consider in that second level of service, that we should get something between 20 and 80 percent of the expenses recovered through the fee recovery. And as you can see, we, we get a little bit closer, or we get close to it on two of them, but two of them are on the higher side of that. It's interesting to note the number of, of users we have in our participants we have in those programs that utilize our fields. And actually, I sent the, the original one in, when the presentation was made to City Council, and it's interesting to see the participation numbers from 2004 as it is compared to today. And as you can imagine, the soccer number is almost double what it was back in 2004, while the others have remained about the same. Then when we get into tournaments, we have, again, about $100,000, a little over $100,000 in direct costs associated with tournaments, and the, the fees that are recovered through that amount to about $25,000, and it does fall in that 20 to 80 percent range. So, in moving forward and putting in place a, a new fee structure as well as, as additional policies, we took a look at both those aspects of how we provide things, both the leagues and the tournaments themselves. And what we came up with is, instead of a one-size-fits-all-for-all leagues, we determined that because of the cost of baseball and softball, and the primary difference in the, the additional cost of those services are they're offered four and five days a week as opposed to soccer, which is typically one day a week. So, that's why their costs are that much higher. And so, with that, we felt that the, those fees needed to be higher than what the fees were for soccer and football. And so, then you can see on the bottom what the impact would be, would move baseball and softball into that 20 to 80 percent range. And originally, we did propose a higher fee for softball and baseball, however, and talking to, to the associations, they, they felt that is, all they would do is pass that along to our users, and we'd be a little bit concerned as to, you know, the feedback we would get from doing so. And so, we've scaled that back a little bit to $10 rather than, than going up to 15. When it comes to our tournaments, we've essentially kept our hourly rates the same for our different facilities. However, we, one of the, the biggest issues in offering tournaments that we heard from tournament directors was the use of lights. And so, right now, we currently charge $35 an hour for lights, and when we go to this structures, what we would do is we would include three hours of lights. One of the things we do want to encourage is the use of lights, because typically, if, if the tournament is using lights, that means those individuals are going to have to stay overnight. A lot of our tournaments are currently just Saturday and Sunday as opposed to Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and a lot of that reason, I believe, is because Friday night, you have to charge lights. We've had to charge lights. But now, this would allow them to be able to offer those games on Friday nights and not have an additional fee associated with it. So, that's one of the considerations. And then the Class A, Class B, and Class C, that, that refers to the level of service for that different field. Lear is considered a Class A and down the line, depending on what the amenities are in the different fields that we offer. And one of the things that we had never differentiated was the difference between renting a field. So, if you rented it for a game, if you rented it for a tournament, or if you rented it for practice, the fee was the same. And we felt that we have some underutilized facilities due to the, the cost of providing a field for practice. And so, what we're trying to do is increase the amount of use of some of our fields when they're not scheduled for games, for practices. That's one of the concerns that we heard from a number of people, not just those associated with the, the leagues or the tournaments, but as our residents, we wanted to be able to provide them better access to their facilities that they're utilizing, but at a more reasonable cost. And so, that's what we have chose to do with, with implementing field reservation fees for just for practices. The level of service would be much less. We wouldn't necessarily drag it. We wouldn't put out lines. We wouldn't do all those kind of things that we would prepare it for when it comes to a game or associated with it. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any other, any questions. As I said, we, we've been working through this pretty diligently, and it's gone through about six different changes, and we're, we're excited to be able to, to offer the fees and the, the structure that we've put in place to the associations as well as tournament directors in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Karen, for your input and for taking these things and tweaking them the way that we need to tweak them. So, any questions, Counsel? Sir? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Got to have one.
Aren't you supposed to be on vacation tonight?
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay. Scott, how long have you been here with City of Longview?
Since June.
My Lord, you've done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, where do we find this video that Lefty Vote was talking about that he enjoyed watching so much?
I, I believe it was the park board meeting from October where I updated the, the park board on the overall budget and the process of everything that we have.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just interested in what he said. Thank you.
I actually really enjoyed that.
Yes.
That was very helpful.
Very, very helpful.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Second?
Can I ask one quick question?
Please, please.
I don't have vacation or anything coming up.
Please.
But, because of Mr. Vote, I was wondering, you know, you suggested $15 per person originally on softball?
Yes, sir.
And how much are you recovering now at $10?
If we go to $10, it'll be about 23 to 25 percent.
Okay. And so, you didn't go to 15 for, just because people thought that might be too much of a burden for?
Yes, sir. And, and, you know, with their variety of reasons why we could or could not, we just chose to, to me, it's, it's part of working on that relationship and that partnership with the associations that we have, and that's not to say that we won't come back in, in October for next year's fee resolution, that that's something that we would do. But at this time, we felt that, you know, we need to demonstrate to them that we're, we're listening to their concerns, and we do understand what they're dealing with.
And that, was that just for the adult softball, or?
No, that'd be for the youth side. And again, that's, that's specifically for the youth side.
Okay. What about on the adult side?
That, the adult softball is a program that we run, and that's one that, that we try to get at that 100 to 120 percent on, on how it's offered.
All right.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Counsel?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, moving on. Items of community interest. Mr. Moore, you're up.
A couple of things. Number one, I had my very first town hall meeting Tuesday night. I thought it was successful. I was a little nervous going into it, but I thank the staff for showing up and answering questions that I couldn't answer. I noted today some of Mr. McPhee's crews already out taking care of things that were pointed out in the town hall meeting. So, again, kudos to our staff. We have a good group. Second, I thought it might be interesting to find out, we, at last month's meeting, authorized a refunding of about $10 million of our general obligation bonds. We have since consummated that refunding, and I thought it might be interesting for you all to hear a little bit about what the bond rating agencies thought of us and how it turned out. Both of our bond ratings were left as they were, AA plus, which is the second highest you can get, and then AA by Fitch, AA plus by Standard and Poor's. And just some comments from Standard and Poor's. They pointed out in a couple of places, very strong management with strong financial policies and practices. So, again, accolades to our management staff and our financial staff. Adequate budgetary performance. They did, of course, point out the operating deficit we budgeted this year, and we probably are not going to be able to milk that cow many more times. Very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and rapid amortization. We're paying off about 70 percent of our debt within 10 years, which they think is outstanding. They give us a stable outlook, reflects our view of Longview's consistent financial performance and economy, which is supported by good management. We do not expect to revise the rating in the next two years because we believe the city will maintain adequate reserves and continue to participate in its broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area. They say that with one proviso. However, should the city reduce its budgetary flexibility below 15 percent, we could lower the rating. So, we got to watch out for that. So, anyway, when Mr. Martin was here last month, he estimated that with the refunding, we could save about $480,000 over a seven-year period at an estimated interest rate of 1.76 percent. We signed on the dotted line with a savings of $545,000 and an interest rate of 1.65 percent. So, we done good, folks.
Kudos. Very good. Thank you, sir. Ms. Nutty.
Good evening, everyone. I haven't scheduled a town hall meeting yet because I'm busy attending everybody else's, so I don't know what to do and what not to do. Thank you, though, to code enforcement for initiating the clean sweep concentrated in Snapper Park area. Really do appreciate that, and I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shihara.
I don't have anything, but I would move to excuse Ms. Casha from our meeting tonight.
So noted. Mr. Wright.
Well, the same thing is known. I want to thank Chief Bishop for the sweep through Bernice, and there were a lot of happy constituents out there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Allen.
I'm not sure everything left to say. No, one more, one little thing. Chief Bishop, police chief, again, folks, if you're looking for something to help with and something to contribute to our community, the Blue Santa program has been very good for many years now, and it's a very worthwhile program. It gets the police officers into a home in a family situation that they're normally not able to do. It's just a, it's a good positive program, something you should think about if you're looking for some way to help your community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I think Ms. Shepherd has a picture to put up. We want to announce the birth of Maxwell Grant Harrah. That's their own Sean Harrah and his wife Bethany and big sister Madeline. And you noticed Sean wasn't here tonight, so that's where he is. Maxwell was born December the 9th at 4:35 a.m., 7 pounds, 7 ounces. Now, I do want to point out, and I'll check this with Sean when he gets back, but we had his employee evaluation last week, and I understood the baby's name would be David. So I don't know what happened between last week and now, but Sean will be back. I'll get to the bottom of it at that time. Congratulations to the Harrah family.
Very good. Congratulations to both the Harrah's. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few things. First off, I would like to clarify something. I believe it was our last meeting, the meeting before, where we did our fleet replacement through Tasby, where we purchased vehicles through a co-op that we were able to purchase vehicles. I've had some people ask me why we didn't shop local, and I want to explain that because I think it's important that we always are accountable. Number one, we don't get sales tax revenues off of automobile sales, so that's not something that we're losing. Number two, this co-op that we buy from sells to municipalities at an incredibly reduced rate that we did actually contact vendors in Longview, and they agreed that they couldn't compete with that. So I just want you to know that we didn't just go out and say, we're going to go, we're telling you to shop local, we're going to go buy someplace else. We don't lose any sales tax off automobile sales, and that's a co-op where we save a ton of money specifically for municipalities. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I thank you, I want to thank the citizen that pointed out to me because we need to be held accountable just like anyone else, and I appreciate that. Second thing, and I saw this in the paper today, and I was going to mention it anyway, but I do want us as a city, and I know this is a county thing as well, to look into the possibility of having voting locations where you can vote anywhere you want to, because I do think that's a big deterrent in our community. Because I have a lot of people asking me, where do I vote? And they go, and they can't vote, and they get discouraged. And you know what? Voter turnout is so poor anyway, we should be doing everything within our powers to make it easier and more efficient to go out and vote if you so choose. So, I hope we're looking into that along with the county. I know the county elections are one thing, city elections are another thing. So, let's please make that a priority and find a way to make it easier for our citizens to get out and cast their vote and make their voice heard. The next thing, I know you all are aware of this, know that we're aware of this. With the recent passage of Hensley Park, we know that this is going to be a high-traffic area if this all goes to fruition, as we anticipate it going to fruition. And one of the big concerns has always been traffic, and we're already looking into this because, I don't know how many of y'all have gone one way or the other, but that intersection at 259 and Hawkins going east is a disaster. It's a huge dip that you can tear the front of your car off, and I sat and waited through three lights last weekend at coming out of the movie because people are going slow through that. And I understand that, but we have addressed that. We are going to fix that intersection so that it's not a traffic problem when we start the new Hensley Park. So, just know that we're aware of that and that we've already addressed it. I've talked to Mr. Willard, and we already had that on our radar, so, because it's annoying. It's, and there's no point in casting blame. Doesn't matter who did it or why it was done, that's irrelevant. The point is, we need to fix it, and we as a city are going to fix that problem so we don't have traffic issues in that location. And I thank you all for being on top of that, David. Okay, survey time. I know it's a long meeting, we've been here a long time, but got to bear with me. Here's our survey for this week, and we had a great response, and this is a very fitting survey this time of year. In thinking of others this holiday season, if you could provide assistance to a specific group in Longview, who needs help, who would you provide assistance to? Your answers were elderly who are lonely, teens who feel they do not have a place to belong, those living in poverty, the homeless population, children who otherwise would not have much of a Christmas or other. We had almost a tie, which is great, and it's almost a three-way tie. But here's what impresses me. Number one, the other category, almost everyone that put in the other category said all of the above, and that warms my heart because there's not one person, one entity on here that doesn't deserve our help and our attention. And so I was so proud to see that our citizens didn't want to choose just one. They said, we want to help, we need, we want to and we need to help every one of those entities. So, that's where I'm going to leave it. We're going to help all those entities. It doesn't matter who came in first. Those are things that we need to be doing as a community, and this time of year, it should really be on our forethoughts because that's where we need to be thinking at this time of year. So, thank you for your responses, and I appreciate your citizen concern. Second question, what are you most looking forward to doing over the holidays in East Texas? This is a gimme. Spending time with family, eating great food, shopping, enjoying holiday festivities such as showing shows, looking at lights, parties, et cetera. Overwhelmingly, we know, spending time with family, and that's what we're all about here in East Texas, and that makes me feel good again because I thought it was going to be returning Christmas presents, but no, it wasn't a choice. So, thank you for your participation in the surveys. Once again, I know it might seem menial and it might seem trite, but we gain a lot of information about what you all are thinking as a community through these surveys. And we don't, I don't take them lightly. I don't put them out there just to put them out there. I only do them during the week of council meetings because I want to find out what you're thinking, and this is a way to communicate, and I appreciate the input. And like it or not, they're going to keep coming. So, thank you for your participation. Okay, book club time. I thought we were through with that, didn't you? Nah, not a chance. Okay, tonight, oh, wait, 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 no, no, I have some more items of community interest. Hold on. Longview Fire Department Christmas toy drive will be Saturday, December 12th at Longview Memorial Parking Lot from 9 to 5. Longview Police Department will offer three public meetings for open carry that begins January 1st. That begins, oh, open carry that begins January 1st. Okay. The meetings will take place December 19th, 21st, and 22nd, as Chief Bishop already said. Holiday greetings from city council and city staff are now showing on City View Municipal Television. They'll also be available to view online at longviewtexas.gov. Y'all should watch some of those, they're quite interesting. Y'all have some great families, y'all did a great job. Very nice. City offices will be closed on Thursday, December 24th and Friday, December 25th for the Christmas holidays. Will also be closed the following Friday, January 1st for New Year's Day. There'll be no, there will be normal trash and recycling collection during the Christmas and New Year holidays. Once again, thank you, Mr. Archer. Partners in provincial hosts Understanding the Struggle of Poverty Workshop, January 13th from 9:30 to 4:00 p.m. at Moncove, cost of $25. Please plan to attend those functions. Now, we're to the book club. Okay, and I apologize to some of y'all that have been sitting in this audience for over an hour and a half. Sorry, I didn't expect you to be this long. First, what I want to do, I would like to first tell you about an organization here in Longview called Newgate Mission. Newgate was founded in 1990, and it strives to be a beacon of light for those who live in seemingly hopeless world. Newgate's purpose is to demonstrate God's love for all His children while working day to inspire hope and transition in our community. Because it's hard to hear a message when your stomach is empty, Newgate feeds our brothers and sisters in need every day and offers them other basic necessities such as a shower, toiletries, a place to wash their clothes, and receive mail. Newgate also looks beyond those immediate needs by offering daily Bible studies, weekly church services, and programs designed to get people working, find safe and stable housing, and enjoy the cycle of poverty in their lives. And end the cycle of poverty in their lives. You can visit Newgate at newgatemission.org. The reason I'm bringing this up is because through this book club, we are going to have a partnering with Newgate Mission where we're going to donate our books, and I'm sure the council members are each going to be willing to do that. I brought mine tonight to donate. I'd like Ms. Christie Bogel Sherman to please come forward. Please come up here. Ms. Bogel Sherman is the director of Newgate and has agreed to partner with us, and what my vision for this is, is for us to donate these books that we're now through with to Newgate. The council representatives have agreed to host a day, and we're going to start this in February, I believe, or is it January? In January. Okay. Where we're going to each one host a day where we kind of do the book club with the Newgate residents. And I think this is such an important partnership because everyone deserves a chance to feel important. You know, that's, if you read this book, you know what it's all about. It's a little story about a powerful idea. So, we're looking forward to this. We're going to get a bunch of books donated. If you want to donate your book, please bring it to City Hall, or you can bring it to the mission and drop it off there. And here's the next twist of that. Once we're through doing it with Newgate, we're going to pass these books on to the next entity, and we're going to keep this going through our community where Highway 80 can do it. There's a lot of places we can do this where we can all benefit, and we all deserve that. So I want to thank you for agreeing to do this and partnering with this council, and I want to thank each council person for being willing to step out and be out there with us. And the city staff, all of you that have books, you're welcome to donate them as well. And you may get them back someday, put your name in it. Maybe they'll come back to you at some point, but if not, it went to a great cause, so first book is yours.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor, you autographed our book. You going to autograph all the others for him?
Uh, no. That one is actually autographed. Okay, next. I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Chin to please come forward. And Tom, please bring your lovely wife Jill with you. Okay, gang, this is special. This is Tom and Jill Chin. A few months ago, I told you about an anonymous donor that had agreed to donate the body cameras to the city of Longview for our police officers and for the sheriff's office as well. The things that we need for betterment of their services and for our community. And this is the couple that is doing that. And I can tell you, when Tom called me, out of the blue, now, this is, I mean, I've known Tom my whole life. Tom grew up here in town, I'm going to let him tell you his story in a minute, but I've known Tom a long time. And when he called me, I had no idea what it was for. And he said, listen, I've been reading that Go-Giver book, and I'm thinking, you kind of like me, I would have never thought you'd read the book. I never thought I'd read the book. I bet a lot of y'all thought y'all wouldn't read the book, and I bet Lefty never thought he'd be involved in a book club, would you, Lefty? So, it does affect us. And Tom said, I want to do something, and he told me the story of what propagated this, and he said, I want to do what it takes to get body cameras for our public servants. And I was blown away. I mean, that is an amazing, generous, kind, considerate, Go-Giver offer. And Tom has met what I consider the Go-Giver Challenge, and we're going to set up a fund here at Longview called the Go-Giver Fund, where people can donate things to our community that can be used for our citizens, for our services that we need to provide. And I can't think of a better way to start this off, Tom, and I cannot, I can never thank you enough, and I know the chief and everyone sitting here and the citizens feel the same way, because this is not something that you had to do, but I know your heart, and I know where you come from, and I know who you are, and I want, and Tom wanted to be anonymous. And I have begged and pleaded with him for a month now to please not be anonymous because standing here, this will inspire other people to do the same thing. And it's important that you know what a sacrifice this is, but where his heart is, and I want you to see that, and I want you to see who the person was that came forward and started this. So I think this is hopefully the first of many things to come, but if it's not, this is a great way to start it in, because I'm telling you, this is an amazing thing for the community, and I appreciate you, Tom. And would you please, please feel free to talk to us. Tell us about it.
Okay, well, this past summer, during my quiet time, I was kind of asking the Lord about what I could do for the city of Longview, because the mayor's race was going on, there was a lot of things going on, and I didn't really know what I was going to do. But when I got back into town, I had breakfast with a police officer about 4 o'clock in the morning at IHOP, and, well, just did a lot of listing and just asked him, you know, is there anything that the city might need or anything? And he said, well, you know, by the way, there is. And I thought, okay, there's my chance right there, I'm going to do this. So he explained to me, you know, about the body cameras and all, and spoke to my wife about it, and she said, sure, that's a great thing. In fact, I would have to say, if there's anything that I could have ever done, I love to give mainly to church organizations and whatnot and have in the past, but if there's anything that I could do at this point in our country, our city, for our citizens, we're all a team here now. We all live here, our steps are order to the Lord. We've all got to look out after one another, and our law enforcement needs to be our heroes. They are the ones that come when we call. And our law enforcement needs to be our heroes. They are the ones that come when we call. And so, I couldn't think of a better thing to do, so this was music to my ears to hear this from this officer. And I couldn't wait to call Andy because I'd already made my mind up. I didn't, at the point in time, I didn't know what it was going to cost, didn't really care. I was going to make a way somehow if I had to get some friends to help me. But anyway, I'll keep it short. That's kind of how it all came about. And I love our city. I grew up in South Longview on Lemons Drive, played ball with Andy and all. We're Longviewites. You know, we take pride in our city, and there's a lot of friends that I have that could do the same thing. I'm just one of many that are out here, and I want to encourage all of them to do what they can to help our city to grow
I agree. Keep it coming. And I know you all don't know Tom like I know Tom and Jill, but they are very giving, caring individuals, but they're also very proud individuals, and this took a lot for them to come out and publicly do this. But I think it's important, like I say, that we see the heart of this couple and what they envision for our community, and I just, I, you think it was music to your ears? It was music to my ears when I got the phone call. I can't tell you how much I appreciate you. The city of Longview appreciates you. You're a wonderful, wonderful couple for our city and an example to so, so many. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Is that the spirit of giving or what? Okay, we're not through. Once again, because of this Go-Giver book and this Go-Giver attitude, and understand, ladies and gentlemen, this is not me. This is just people. This is what, this is what sometimes you can do with little ideas. I don't know how many of y'all know who Gordon Woolley is. Gordon Woolley is the owner of Soapy's Car Wash. Gordon Woolley brought this to me today to read at the council meeting because he couldn't be here because he's doing another charity function tonight. Next Wednesday, December sixteenth, Soapy's Car Wash is hosting an appreciation day for all patrol officers of the Longview Police Department, the Gray County Sheriff's Department, and Texas Highway Patrol. You need to go by Hot Dog Express on Highway eighty from ten-thirty a.m. to ten p.m. for a meal on Soapy's. Just show your badge and a smile, and you're in. Signed, Gordon Woolley. So, once again, there's the Go-Givers in our community coming forward and stepping up and doing what we all should be doing. And understand, we can't all do to these magnitudes, but you know what? What does it say in the book? We can all do something. So, amen to you all. Thank you all. Thank you to Gordon Woolley. Thank you to the Chins. I can't tell you how much we appreciate you all. So, so wonderful. Okay, the last thing is Mayor Max's challenge. And we've done this a few times, and it's been very, very successful. Today, I'm going to talk to you about shopping local, okay? I know this is crazy. The week before Black Friday, we did a little video at our office where we held up these two little bitty signs that said, Shop Local and Black Friday. And we did a little Facebook thing where we said, if you come by, if you like our Facebook page and share it, we'll give you the ability to be in a drawing for a hundred-dollar gift certificate to any restaurant or business in Longview that you so desire. You know, we figured we'd get a little bit of response on it. I don't know if any of y'all looked at that Facebook thing. Tried sixty-three thousand views on that Facebook post. Blew me away. So, that tells me that we're, number one tells you one hundred dollars, which I don't blame you. But what it also tells me is that we are concerned and we're interested in what's going on in our community. And you know what? Once again, we got the same news we get every month this week, today, that our sales tax revenues are down for the tenth straight month. You know what, gang? That's going to be the headline for the next two years probably because we cannot control the oil and gas market. We cannot. And that plays a huge part in our sales tax revenues. But you know what? What we're not hearing, but what Matthew Prosser so nicely put in the paper today, Matthew, thank you, is the fact that even though we can't control the oil and gas market, we do control other segments of that sales tax revenue. And if you look at our sales tax, our retail, our restaurants, and our hotel taxes are all up by significant margins. So, the things that we can actually control, we are doing a good job of taking care of our community. We cannot control the oil and gas industry. We don't have a control over OPEC. Maybe in November, we will, but we don't at this point in time. So, until then, we're going to continue to have this headline, which doesn't need to be there. We all know it. We don't need to be reminded every year that every month that our sales taxes are down. We know that. I'd like to see it say, retail sales taxes are up. Way to go, Longview. Way to shop local. Way to support your community. And we're going to continue that trend. I want to see us shopping local this time of year especially. There's a lot of people that are going to be out Christmas shopping. We've talked about those numbers and how we can change our tax revenues by just small amounts per family. Please, please, please be conscious this holiday season when you're out shopping to shop in our community, to eat in our community, to support our community. It does make a difference. And I appreciate the people that have been involved and those that are going to be involved. So, let's do our part to make Longview one Longview, shop local. So, I forgot one thing, didn't I? Are we reviewing the new book tonight? You know, the new book club's coming up. Bam. There it is. The Energy Bus. Get ready to get on the bus. That will be our new book club starting in February. I can tell you, this book is just like the last one. When you start reading it, you are not going to want to put it down. It's a great story. It's very easy to read. It's a little bit longer than the other one, but just wait till you see how you can fuel your life, your work, and your team with positive energy. So, this is our next book that will start in February. So, I encourage you all. This will be great Christmas presents for people that you know. Buy the book. Buy it local. But the Energy Bus. Go out and get it. Counsel, I have bad news for you all. I'm not providing your copies this time. You're on your own. City staff, you're on your own, but I expect you all to go out and buy this book because we'll start the discussions in February, Monday night, seven p.m. And I can tell you, you'll like this just as much as you like the Go-Giver. So, who knows what this will bring about? The Go-Giver did pretty good, if you ask me. So, let's see where we're going to go. Thank you all. Please have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Be safe. Count your blessings, and know what a great city we have to live in. This meeting is adjourned.